Item 221, appointments. We've got two appointments for your department. Chief Connery, Chief McLean, you're coming up too? Why don't, come on, we don't see you up here that often, come on.
Good evening. Tonight I have two appointments, one captain and one lieutenant. Captain Tim Brown retired last month, and so that opened it up. Position for captain, which then opens up a position for lieutenant. So I'll start with captain. I'm going to recommend Lieutenant Kevin Poliselli for the promotion to fire captain. He's one of three candidates. We interviewed them all, reviewed their resumes and personnel files, and as with all of our candidates, they're all capable of taking on the position. Lieutenant Poliselli achieved the highest rank on the list. He's been with the fire department since 1999. He's had some acting time as lieutenant before being promoted to lieutenant in July of 2016. He took on the role of ENT coordinator from May 2008 to September of 2013, where he worked with our EMS trainer, managing the medical supplies and coordinating with our billing contractor. He's a volunteer on numerous committees, new apparatus, new station, hazardous gas meters, fire department software, just to name a few. He has served as acting captain numerous times, where he takes the place of the captain who's out that day. In that role, he's responsible for managing the shift and also being the incident commander at large fires or large incidents. And an example was one of the recent house fires this spring. He did an exemplary job keeping it from going to the next building. He has countless certifications. I'm not going to go through the whole list, but he pretty much has every one that you can get, everyone that you need, for sure. He has a Bachelor of Arts in Political Science, an associate's degree in Fire Protection. He's enrolled in a master's program for public administration. He's a military veteran. After graduating Syracuse, he served in the U.S. Army Military Police, rank of sergeant. He was on a special reaction, he was a special reaction team leader and a patrol supervisor. He has several years of supervisory experience in the private sector as well, supervising subordinates and ensuring clients' lab safety policies and procedures are up to date. In summary, Lieutenant Poliselli, he's an experienced lieutenant with proven abilities at the role of acting captain. Taken on additional responsibilities throughout the years, both compensated positions and volunteer roles, earned multiple higher education degrees, earned all the fire service certifications you could ask for. He's an excellent choice for promotion to fire captain at the Burlington Fire Department. And I would add that his dad was deputy chief of the fire department, Deputy Chief Phil Poliselli, before his untimely passing. I respectfully request that he be promoted to fire captain and it be effective tomorrow, October 4th, 2023.
Thank you, Chief.
What I failed to mention back when Captain Bibby was promoted was that his father was
With the Chief's recommendation, I appoint Kevin Poliselli to the position of fire captain
a firefighter in the Burlington Fire Department as well.
in the Burlington Fire Department and ask that the board wait its 15-day waiting period.
Lot of family tradition in the fire service.
So moved.
Seconded. Moved and seconded.
Lot of family tradition, yep.
All in favor?
My father was a firefighter and this next guy also has family in the fire service, his
Aye.
Aye.
Five zero zero. There you go, Kevin. You see him there? Congratulations. Congratulations.
grandfather and his uncle.
Congratulations.
I'd like to recommend Thomas Monagle for promotion to fire lieutenant. One of four candidates. Again, all the candidates were interviewed, resumes and personnel files reviewed, and again, all of them are capable of taking on the position. And again, firefighter Monagle was the highest ranking on the list. He's been a firefighter since April of 2017, but came to us from Northborough, where he's a firefighter since 2013. He served as our EMS equipment and supplies coordinator, similar to Lieutenant Poliselli, or now Captain Poliselli. And he has also volunteered on committees. Certified firefighter, certified hazmat, and he's currently in the Fire Officer One certification class with 22 of our other members. He has an associate's degree. He has some experience in building construction, including electrical work, which are both important knowledge for firefighters to have. In summary, he's an experienced firefighter. He's taken the opportunities for additional roles at the fire department, taken opportunities to enhance his knowledge, skills, and abilities, and, you know, holding an associate's degree. I'm pleased to present him for promotion to fire lieutenant, and I respectfully request that it be effective tomorrow, October 4th, 2023.
Thank you, Chief. With the Chief's recommendation, I appoint Thomas Monagle to the position of fire lieutenant in the Burlington Fire Department and ask that the board wait its 15-day waiting period.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Five zero zero. Tom, congratulations.
Thank you.
Right there, Tom. Come on, Chief, thank you.
But he's excited.
Too cute.
I think that that was her father.
Yeah, right, I know.
I don't want to leave him, but he's daddy, too bad.
Alrighty. All right, item 222, appointment DPW, heavy equipment operator laborer. Ryan White, come on up.
Good evening, Board. I'm here to give a recommendation for the appointment of a special heavy equipment operator position in our Highway Division. Our Highway Superintendent Kevin Keane and I completed interviews for this position. After review of qualifications and experience, I'm recommending Mr. Justin Paganello for this position. Mr. Paganello has over 11 years of experience working in the construction industry, most recently for another level landscape and tree company. During this period, he gained experience in a number of skills that apply to this position, including snow and ice, heavy equipment operation and hauling, and power equipment. He has a Class A CDL license and Class 2A and 1C hoisting licenses. He's also awaiting test dates for his 1B, 4E, and 4G hoisting licenses. With all of this experience and qualifications, I believe Justin will be a great addition to our Highway Division and recommend his appointment.
Thank you, Brian. With Brian's recommendation, I wish to appoint Justin Padgenetti to the position of special heavy equipment operator laborer in the Highway Division in the Public Works and ask that the board wait its 15-day waiting period.
Moved.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Five zero zero. Congratulations, Justin. No objections, we'll continue on with appointments. We'll skip over 223. For now, go down to, oh, do you, were you here? I'm sorry.
I called DPW.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize, okay. Okay, regardless, how about, we're going to continue with the appointments then for item 224. Town Administrative Select Board Appointment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to take this.
Oh, sure.
It's my pleasure to recommend Kelly Bogavin to the appointment for the position of administrative assistant in the Town Administrative Select Board Office. Kelly comes to us with a wealth of experience earlier in her career. Kelly spent some time in the legal environment, working as a paralegal. She was able to gain experience in homeless skills necessary to be successful in a municipal setting, specifically the two pillars that we preach here in Burlington, which is attention to detail and, of course, our customer service mindset, where we greet everybody with a smile and try to solve their problems as best we can. Beyond that, related experience and required skill set, Kelly has invaluable direct experience having worked in a fast-paced municipal executive's office for a mayor and city solicitor for 14 years. Kelly comes very highly recommended by our former colleagues and supervisors, and we're excited to get started working with her. So as I said at the outset, it's my pleasure to recommend Kelly for appointment.
Thank you, John. And, of course, I've sat in on these interviews, and I agree, Kelly looks like she's going to be a great candidate for our office. So I wish to appoint Kelly Bogavin to the position of administrative assistant in the Town Administrative Select Board Office and ask that the board wait its 15-day waiting period.
So moved.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Five zero zero. Kelly, come on up. Welcome aboard. Great job navigating around the bucket there.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
All right, we're going to circle back to you, Mr. White. Overnight shutdown, general bylaw, Article 14, Section 4.5.
Hello.
Hi there.
Hello. So I'm Megan Cavalier. I'm the Assistant Town Engineer. So this is in relation to the construction hours that are in the Article 14 bylaw. So over the past several months, the Engineering Division with Weston and Sampson and National Water Main have been lining various sewer pipes in town. One of those pipes that's in very critical condition runs across Cambridge Street. This has been attempted multiple times during the day, but unfortunately, the sizing of the pipes don't really work out to not run a bypass across Cambridge Street. It's failed every time we've attempted it. So I'm asking permission to have this work done at nighttime. With lower sewer flows and with the bypass being across Cambridge Street, we would have to shut down a small portion of Cambridge Street as well, which we have Mass DOT permission to do. The portion of Cambridge Street that's going to be shut down will be from Wilmington Road to Chestnut Ave. on the south side where the car wash is. Unfortunately, I don't know the name, it's just changed. But we're looking to do this, it's only going to be one night. It will take most likely 12 hours, but could take less time depending on how well the night goes, it really just depends. So it will be shut down completely for at least 12 hours.
Okay, that's pretty self-explanatory. Questions from the Board?
Just have one, second question. I was just curious, the six to six, that's the 12 hours, which we can all figure that one out. Six o'clock, do you know what night of the week it's going to be?
We're planning on doing it Thursday night.
This Thursday night coming up?
Yes. There will be message boards, unless you guys say no. But there'll be message boards sent out, reverse 911s townwide, as well as residents who will be affected by this work will get hand-delivered notices.
Okay, so the only thing I'm looking at is six o'clock, is it still a huge traffic flow on that part of the road? I was wondering if it could go to seven?
The problem was, we have to choose a rush hour to distract, and the morning traffic is typically heavier than the night traffic. If they start at six o'clock, they won't actually be shutting it down exactly at six. We, hopefully, it will be between six and 6:30, so the least amount of cars possible, whereas in the morning, we'd be nervous about major rush hour and having that road shut down.
Yeah, they've been up there, I live right up there, so I've seen the soil cleaning guys up there all the time trying to push it out, just not working.
Yeah, it hasn't, the attempt has failed three times, so there's really no other options.
It was just a question, I didn't know if it was happening or not, but I have no problem with it at all, just.
They're hoping it will take 10 hours, and that way they'll be out for the complete morning traffic, but it's really a gamble sometimes with this kind of work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Do we have a day that you've already picked for?
The plan is to do it on Thursday. The way liners work is you have to order them in advance, and they expire, and this liner expires October 31st. So if this doesn't work, then we will have to pay for a new liner, just because this, the process started in July, so we don't want to lose the liner, so we're really in critical time, as well as the pipe is in very, very critical condition after reevaluation. We're not sure how much longer it will hold out.
Megan, what type of noise impact will there be for the residents overnight?
There's not too much noise, it's mostly just truck noises. The trucks have to stay on loud truck noises. It's not beeping or backing up, they don't even move the entire night for the most part. It's just that they'll be on, there's a lot of steam, it's typically not too loud. We don't have any complaints during the day with noise, so they don't have any complaints when they've worked in other parts of town later at night, so I'm not thinking it will impact people's noise levels, it will more be the detour where they have to cut through neighborhoods.
And that's a complete shutdown, it doesn't go to one lane from Wilmington to Chestnut?
No, we have to have a complete shutdown of Cambridge Street because the bypass pump has to run across Cambridge Street to keep up with the flow amount. The pipes on the side of Cambridge Street that we were trying to keep it on are too small for the pipe size that we need to line.
Is this enough notice to give people for doing it this Thursday?
I don't think it will be too much of an issue, they won't really be impacted at all, it will just be cars, but we're hoping that cars minimally go through the neighborhoods and take the detour where they use Francis Wyman, but the detour is still being worked out with the Police Department for public safety.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Did you have follow-up, Joe?
Yep, I did. Sorry, I'm back. This is going to sound crazy, but if this is a state road, why are we, is it, the drains are ours and the road is the state's, I'm assuming?
Yes, the sewer lines are ours.
The only time we can dig up the road is if we need to do something with it, but they can repave it anytime they want, basically the state's telling us, go.
Yeah, so we are working under the emergency permit that we always have in case of water main breaks or sewer main breaks, but we do not want this pipe to break at all.
I think the reason why I mention this is because a lot of residents are going to say to us, if we're in stop and shop where we're going to be, well, how come you guys dug up the road? It's not your road.
It's actually not going to be digging up anything, it's all trenchless.
Right, but they are going to shut down the road. We are.
Yes.
We are shutting down the road, and they're going to say, well, if you guys can shut down the road and do that work, why can't we just repave it ourselves? I'm going to have to come up with a reason why, most residents ask me, that's the only reason I'm asking you and Brian, so when the residents ask me, like if your father comes in, oh, he doesn't live in Burlington, but that's okay. So, but anyway, but you know what I mean? So if I'm in Chars and someone said, well, how can we shut down the road? If it's a state road, why did we end up doing that?
So we don't.
I have a reason to tell them.
We don't own the road, we own the pipes, but we had to get permission. It took about a month to get permission to do this, and even then, it's still difficult, so.
I have an answer, thank you very much.
That's all I got.
They own the drainage because it associates with the road they own.
Okay.
Water and sewer has nothing to do with the road, so they say it's not theirs.
That's more for the residents than it is for, no.
Nick.
Thank you. Just two quick questions. Are we going to be able to put highway signs out for folks who cut through Burlington who aren't going to get any of the other notifications?
There will be three message boards, they've already been delivered to town, so people should be very well advanced notified. There's also going to be extensive detour signs set up. We're still working out the full detour with Mass DOT because we need their approval as well, but there will be signs all over, and we will have multiple details there as well that night.
And then in terms of the Presbyterian Church and services that they're doing, or any use of the parking lot by commuters, is there anything being handled with that, it being the end of a day rush hour?
So they won't be affected, they won't be able to leave going towards Bilbrica, but they'll be able to leave going away from that side, they won't block that entrance, and we've been working with the church and they're okay with the work that we're doing.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My questions about the detours, I'm assuming maybe Chestnut and Lantern would be used, but are we notifying, because we have Leahy here, are we notifying the other towns?
Yes, I will be notifying, I was waiting until I had official approval. I'll be notifying Bilbrica, Tuxbury, and Wilmington Police and Fire tomorrow. But as I spoke with Dave, Officer Dave Outbridge, multiple times about this, and basically we're in agreements, we will get ambulances through. Any ambulance that comes through, we will make sure that they can get to the hospital.
Other follow-ups, Jim?
Go ahead. She's got all the answers, I don't, I'm telling her right now if she's got an answer for you.
Yeah, I know, looking at the map here, are Lantern or Ledgewood going to be affected by any of this?
Lantern Lane is going to have some work done through an easement, but they, so the residents will be notified, but nobody will be going necessarily down that road. And anybody who has an easement, who will have work being done to line their pipe, has already been notified multiple times, and National Water Main wears safety vests with their name on it, so they know who is there if for some reason they're in the yard. And that is explicitly stated on the note that if they see anybody walking through their yard, not to hesitate to call 911 if they believe that it is not somebody associated with this project.
Thank you.
Anything further?
It's going to be fun.
I think so. Yeah, it is, it's going to be inconvenient for some people, for sure. Paul, any final words on this?
No further, all I know is this emergency situation, we would like to be able to try multiple times now. We'd like to take advantage of this liner that we have so it doesn't expire, and we hate to disrupt the roads for any reason, but we're trying to disrupt them as minimally as possible in order to get this very important new line.
All right, Joe, this is your subcommittee, you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we shut down Cambridge Street, 6:00, from 6:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m. on this Thursday, what's the date?
26th.
26th.
Motion seconded by Jim. Anything further? Being done, all in favor?
Aye.
Five zero zero. There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I want to say officially, we're doing, authorizing the construction hours extension of the road, opposed to shutting down the road.
Are we changing that?
So the construction hours are 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., so basically authorizing the construction work after hours.
Mr. Chairman, one quick comment? What about social media? Have you hit like the residence page and all that?
I will give a write-up to Terry Keane to put it on our pages, and I will also send one to the Police Department. And if there is any other recommendations or requirements that you would like, I can send them.
The residence page has quite a number of people.
I believe that Terry does put it on there, but if it doesn't, I will make sure that it does.
Yeah, she's actually pretty good about posting different DPW items. All right, well, thank you very much, and good luck, I hope that solves our problem.
Yes, me too.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Let me take that. Cultural Council Committee, item 225.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We do have an appointment for the Cultural Council Committee. We have an application from Laura Rogers. I know that this committee is looking for more members and looking for assistance with their annual duties, so I wish to appoint Laura Rogers to the Cultural Council and ask that the board wait its 15-day waiting period.
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay. Any questions from the Board? Being done, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five zero zero is Laura, I don't see Laura here, but congratulations and thank you for volunteering, Laura. I'm going to, let's see, I'm going to skip over 226 just for a moment, we can address this Victular's license, if nobody objects. Item 227, approval of new Victular's license at 207E Cambridge Street, Mayfield. Hi, Tom.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. I'm here on behalf of the applicant here, the principals are sitting here. These gentlemen have a contract to purchase the restaurant that's operating at that site currently, supposed to be closing next week, subject obviously to issuance of this permit. So that's the sole purpose of tonight's appearance, is to get approval for a common Vic license.
Where exactly is 207E, Tom? I'm just kind of.
It's the building, there's O'Reilly's Auto Parts going in on the front part of it.
Oh, yeah.
There's an operating restaurant at the rear of that, Ratu, Ratsoya, I think is how you say it. And it's been, that restaurant's been down there for several years. These gentlemen are going to be buying it and continuing to operate a similar restaurant down there.
Got you, got you, thank you. Questions from the Board? Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So there's nothing else to change in just the ownership, no law will change or anything like that?
No, there's no, nothing in this application other than change of ownership. They might potentially, I had a quick conversation, electronic conversation with Paul this morning, they might be interested in applying for one of the available liquor licenses down the town center. That's something they're going to think about after they purchase the restaurant and kind of get a feel for what's going on down there.
I'll say, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody else?
No.
You have no questions? The Board has no questions?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the new Victular's license of 207E Cambridge Street from Mayfield.
Motion from Jim?
Seconded.
Seconded by Nick. Anything further? Being done, all in favor?
Aye.
Five zero zero. There you go. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
I want to say officially, we're doing, authorizing the construction hours extension of the road, opposed to shutting down the road.
Are we changing that?
So the construction hours are 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., so basically authorizing the construction work after hours.
Mr. Chairman, one quick comment? What about social media? Have you hit like the residence page and all that?
I will give a write-up to Terry Keane to put it on our pages, and I will also send one to the Police Department. And if there is any other recommendations or requirements that you would like, I can send them.
The residence page has quite a number of people.
I believe that Terry does put it on there, but if it doesn't, I will make sure that it does.
Yeah, she's actually pretty good about posting different DPW items. All right, well, thank you very much, and good luck, I hope that solves our problem.
Yes, me too.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Let me take that. Cultural Council Committee, item 225.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We do have an appointment for the Cultural Council Committee. We have an application from Laura Rogers. I know that this committee is looking for more members and looking for assistance with their annual duties, so I wish to appoint Laura Rogers to the Cultural Council and ask that the board wait its 15-day waiting period.
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay. Any questions from the Board? Being done, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five zero zero is Laura, I don't see Laura here, but congratulations and thank you for volunteering, Laura. I'm going to, let's see, I'm going to skip over 226 just for a moment, we can address this Victular's license, if nobody objects. Item 227, approval of new Victular's license at 207E Cambridge Street, Mayfield. Hi, Tom.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. I'm here on behalf of the applicant here, the principals are sitting here. These gentlemen have a contract to purchase the restaurant that's operating at that site currently, supposed to be closing next week, subject obviously to issuance of this permit. So that's the sole purpose of tonight's appearance, is to get approval for a common Vic license.
Where exactly is 207E, Tom? I'm just kind of.
It's the building, there's O'Reilly's Auto Parts going in on the front part of it.
Oh, yeah.
There's an operating restaurant at the rear of that, Ratu, Ratsoya, I think is how you say it. And it's been, that restaurant's been down there for several years. These gentlemen are going to be buying it and continuing to operate a similar restaurant down there.
Got you, got you, thank you. Questions from the Board? Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So there's nothing else to change in just the ownership, no law will change or anything like that?
No, there's no, nothing in this application other than change of ownership. They might potentially, I had a quick conversation, electronic conversation with Paul this morning, they might be interested in applying for one of the available liquor licenses down the town center. That's something they're going to think about after they purchase the restaurant and kind of get a feel for what's going on down there.
I'll say, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody else?
No.
You have no questions? The Board has no questions?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the new Victular's license of 207E Cambridge Street from Mayfield.
Motion from Jim?
Seconded.
Seconded by Nick. Anything further? Being done, all in favor?
Aye.
Five zero zero. There you go. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. I want to say officially, we're doing, authorizing the construction hours extension of the road, opposed to shutting down the road.
Are we changing that?
So the construction hours are 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., so basically authorizing the construction work after hours.
Mr. Chairman, one quick comment? What about social media? Have you hit like the residence page and all that?
I will give a write-up to Terry Keane to put it on our pages, and I will also send one to the Police Department.
I'll make a motion that we shut down Cambridge Street, 6:00, hold on, from 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM on this Thursday, what's the date?
26th.
26th. Second motion, second by Jim. Anything further? Being done, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 500. There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I want to say officially, we're doing, authorizing the construction hours, extension of, of the, 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 of the road. So, construction hours at 7:00, 7:00 AM, 7:00 PM, so basically authorizing the, the, the construction work after hours.
Mr. Chairman, one more quick comment? What about social media? Have you hit, like, the residence page and all that?
Um, I will give a write-up to Terry Keen to put it on our pages, and I will also send one to the police department. And if there is any other recommendations or requirements that you would like, I can send them.
The residence page has quite a number of people.
I believe that Terry does put it on there, but if it doesn't, I will make sure that it does.
Yeah, she's actually pretty good about posting different GPW items. All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And good luck. I hope that solves our problem.
Yes, me too.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Let me take that. Cultural Council Committee, item 225.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We do have an appointment for the Cultural Council Committee. We have an application from Laura Rogers. I know that this committee is looking for more members and looking for assistance with their annual duties, so I wish to appoint Laura Rogers to the Cultural Council to ask the board if they can be with her. So move.
Second.
Okay. Any, any questions from the board? Being done, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 500 is Laura. I don't see Laura here, but congratulations and thank you for volunteering, Laura. Um, I'm gonna, uh, let's see, I'm gonna skip over 226 just for a moment. We can address this Victular's license, if nobody objects. Uh, item 227, approval of new Victular, Victular's license at 207E Cambridge Street, Mayfield. Hi, Tom.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. I'm here on behalf of the applicant here, the principals are sitting here. These gentlemen have a contract to purchase the restaurant that's operating at that site currently, supposed to be closing next week, subject obviously to issuance of this permit. So that's the sole purpose of tonight's appearance, is to get approval for a common Vic license.
Where exactly is 207E, Tom? I'm just kinda...
It's the building, um, there's O'Reilly's Auto Parts going in on the front part of it. There's a, there's an operating restaurant at, at the rear of that, at Two, uh, Two Rass, Rassoy, I think is how you say it. Um, and it's been, that, that restaurant's been down there for several years. These gentlemen are gonna be buying it and continuing to operate a similar restaurant down there.
Gotcha, gotcha, thank you. Questions from the board? Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So there's nothing else to change in just the ownership? No law will change or anything like that?
Uh, no, there's no, nothing in this application other than change of ownership. They might, potentially, I had a quick conversation, electronic conversation with Paul this morning, uh, they, they might be interested in applying for one of the available liquor licenses down the town center. Uh, that's something they're gonna think about after they purchase the restaurant and kinda get a feel for what's going on down there.
I'll say, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody else?
No.
You have no questions? The board has no questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Is this the case?
Yes. I'll make a motion to approve the new Victular's license of 207E Cambridge Street from Mayfield.
Motion from Jim?
Second.
Second by Nick. Anything further? Being done, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 500. There you go. Good luck, gentlemen.
Good luck, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Welcome. Good night, Tom.
Good night, Tom.
Good night, Mr. Murphy. All right, I see our Economic Development Director has stepped out.
There she is.
There she is. Hello, Melissa. Item 226, update Economic Development Director.
Thank you.
Okay, so, um, for the record, my name's Melissa Tontaklis.
I work as the Economic Development Director, and I have a little presentation I wanted to kinda just go over so you don't just hear my voice or just... And, hold on, one moment. We're no longer connected to the meeting. Okay, and let's try that one more time. Share. See what this is doing. We are no longer connected to the meeting anymore.
You signed into the meeting?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it's sounding actually not connected. Okay.
Want to share?
Um, do you have it? Great. Thank you. Thank you, John. Just put it to the whole presentation. Yep, thanks. Um, so, um, our town administrator invited me to the select board meeting this evening just to give an update of what the office is doing and just touch base on where some of the local kind of market conditions are today. So with this, just put a few slides together, just a reminder of kinda who we are, you know, in terms of our population, our median age, and these are just things to keep in mind, you know, we're 44, our median age is 44, so we are older than the state. The state is about 40 years, their median age is about 40 years old. We still, as a community, Burlington as a municipal boundary, has a lot more disposable income than most of the communities around us, and we are well-educated. A lot of us, just so you know where some of our money is going, this disposable money is going towards travel, entertainment, and restaurants. If you look at those, those are the top categories where our households spend money. So we go on the next slide. These metrics, just their standard economic development metrics in terms of unemployment, our unemployment is lower than the state's average at this point, 3% versus the state being at 4.3 and the nation at 4.3. Our median household income is stronger than the state. Majority of our employment here in town is in what they call white-collar professional services, finance, and that's about 80% of the workforce falls in, within that category. A lot of people ask me the number of total businesses. So at this point in time, and this is based on ESRI data that was collected within the last month, we have a total of over 2,000 business entities employing, as you can see there, just over 45,000 people. So that doesn't calculate the total daytime population coming in, shopping and doing other things. These are just purely jobs within our municipality. And one rule that some people often look to is, you know, how many residents do you have in the town and how many jobs? So if you were doing a one-to-one ratio, you'd have about 26,000, right, jobs within your community. That would be a strong status. We have, you know, on average here, two, you know, two jobs for every one person living in Burlington. I mean, that's what gives us a very strong kind of commercial, kinda job hub that we have here. So we'll go to the next one. One thing that, you know, you often hear is about, you know, commercial space and what our industrial and flex space is doing, so I probably, I put these numbers in, these numbers come from CoStar. CoStar aggregates a lot of the commercial space that we, they do it nationwide, and now they're moving kinda internationally. But we do have a higher-than-average vacancy rate in our office, and that's hard to see with the graph. So the graph is office-only, and we are the yellow line, and we are peaking right now, depending on different reports you'll take in, from 16% and I've seen upwards of 18%. So that is a lot of vacancy, more than we've seen in, you know, the last 10 years or so for sure. Um, there's still a lot of things to shake out. Leases are coming due, so these things are important because there are things that people think about, talk about, and in the news, there's been themes around, you know, urban doom loop, if you've heard of that. These are when you have, you know, a reduction in your tenancy or a reduction in office demand, then you have no one paying the, the bills, so then no one paying the property tax. And then how are those buildings assessed? And the valuation and our, you know, commercial tax income is all based on that, as you all know. So we are, just being, trying to be mindful of it, doesn't feel too outside of what some other people are experiencing, but that's when we talk about some of our long-term efforts to make sure how we're supporting the commercial is looking at the live-work environment, and that comes into some of our land use policies that we'll talk about. But these are kind of important stats. I think our flex and industrial, we don't have as much of that, so just for context, we have about 8 million square feet of commercial office, whereas we have about 2 million square feet of industrial flex. So, you know, that's kind of the differences that we're looking at here in Burlington. Um, and that graph, that was just pulled, you know, from CoStar. It tries to give you a forecast. It also, the blue line is Natick and, or actually, the blue line is Waltham, pardon me, and then that green line below it is Natick, tried to pull some light communities, but they're all trending upwards. So again, it's not unique to Burlington, it's a phenomenon happening across the nation. I think we're in some ways a lot better positioned than some of the communities. I think that it's experiencing a reduced demand in office because, you know, places like downtowns that are harder to get to, like, you know, it's only focused on commercial office space, those are the ones that are struggling the most, but that's just something to be aware of as we talk about this. Moving forward to the next slide, I wanted to kinda shed, like, you know, some of the positive outlooks, though, that we've had. So I did pull together some of the build, building activity that we've seen in the last 12 to 18 months, and these are all the addresses within town and the individual private investment that we've had on each project. So this is what our building department's really seeing, what they're going through when they do electrical permits, building permit, or plumbing permits. So they're coming through these projects, and as you can see, you know, our Broad and Varisale projects, as well as the, kinda the big base building, extremely high private investment. Overall, if you're looking at all of these projects, it's about over 300 million in private investment within our town. And that also translates to permitting fees, so that does bring in a significant amount of revenue through the permitting fees, and here we've estimated about 3.6 million. You know, some people have asked me about One Wheeler Road, that's the one that was the old ski house. I have reached out to them, they haven't said that they've secured any new tenants to date, but they have eight new, you know, four and four, four buildings, or four tenant spaces on the bottom, four tenant spaces on the top. The building's looking good, and I think that will be a good opportunity for folks there. Also, the Bed Bath &amp; Beyond, people have asked me about that. It's, you know, at this point, scheduled to be a Bob's Furniture, so I don't know, some people have already heard about that, but I just wanted to share where those things are. Um, the office-to-lab conversions, as you can see with Three Vandegrift, Three Burlington Woods, those have been office-to-lab conversions. So those were in the pipeline earlier, if you recall, as, you know, whereas kind of you've heard a lot of the VC money being kind of constrained a little bit and pruned back. So what we're seeing right now is that these projects are finishing up, but we don't have tenants yet for them. So, and that's been a product of, you know, we think kind of what, you know, people in the industry are tracking on the VC money. It's not like really an if, it's just a when, will that kinda come back a little bit? So that's kind of the thinking behind that. Um, let's see, I don't know, we can go to the next one, and then we can do questions Then we went from kind of large scale to small scale, and I wanted just to bring back the town center. I know a lot of people have asked us how some of the placemaking went, and just the high level, we did have over, we counted over the series of four weeks, almost 2,000 attendees, with the last one being kind of our most well-attended. The sales that helped offset the cost came in aboard $25,000. We're still finalizing some of our costs because we had DPW come in and support us, we had some of police support us, but, so we're just calculating, calculating that to get the final costs. But that amount on sales really helps offset most of the costs there. And we had 16 businesses participated, and it was really a proof of concept that, you know, if we can really give people an imagination of what else can be in our town center and how it can be activated, not only for business activity, but, you know, civic engagement and, you know, a community space as well. So we've been really happy with that effort. I think what the select board may wanna think about going into the future is really how we want to, what direction we wanna take that. Is that something we wanna keep going? Do we wanna move it around? You know, what will be our end goal with that beyond, you know, bringing the fresh interest as much as we can to the town center? What other things do we want to accomplish with this effort? So it's just something we can talk about further. Part of the effort is also kinda getting public art in there. We've done the mural effort with, through some of our grant funding. We had 20 submissions, and we're working with the property owner now to finalize the, you know, what will finally go on the wall, kind of, it's planned to be a postcard kind of image, just really kind of fun and welcoming for Burlington. Looking in a, into a couple other things, just so you guys know, and we have the, a vacant storefront program that I want to really explore for us, just, it's a storefront improvement program, it's funding for that type of stuff. A lot of people have asked me about that, and I think we might, I've been doing some analysis on what we have as a total storefront vacancy within the overlay, and we may qualify for that, so we're doing a little more research on that. We're working with the, the library, they've done some kind of cute Where's Waldo projects, kind of trying to do just collaboration with other departments. The 3A overhaul, if you remember, this is part of a longer-term effort. There's, obviously, the restriping, but then if we really wanted to do something more impactful over time, we need to do the tip. The tip is a project, you know, you have application with the state for a lot more money. Last year, we did not get our application in time, it was disappointing, so, but we're coming back this year to do that. And then the new businesses that, you know, we've heard about already, they are gonna, they're still coming, so the Good Night Johnnies, they're still coming, checked in with building, I always check in with building on that because it seems like it's a little quieter. Burn is a new boutique fitness spot that'll be going in there, and Sweet Ginger, a lot of people asked me about that, and I reached out to Murray Hills, and they've had some interest, but they have not secured anyone, they are looking for a restaurant in the ideal scenario. Um, and, you know, the rents in these spaces, if you can imagine, you know, the mall kinda goes for $55 per square foot upwards to 65. You have on the lower end in some of the kinda more dated strip malls, mm, high 20s, and then, you know, the shops at Simons are in like the 30s. So that's kinda how it breaks up, if you think about the different classes of retail. And so sometimes it gets a little bit more challenging to find the right fit, at least that's what the brokers like to tell me. But we know that, we understand that, some, because we have some interest that seems like they would be great, but they're really not able to finance some of the spaces that are offered. So those are, it's, those are the balances we kinda work through. I think we have another slide here, um, kinda transitioning to the long-term efforts. We've talked a lot about this over the last couple of years now, and this is the Mall Road rezoning initiative. We've been working with our consultants, even though we have not had as many, oh, I mean, as much outreach in recent months, but they have worked to complete the use table, so they've updated a use table for this area, they've updated the parking table for this area, and now we have a draft of the mixed zoning, the mixed-use zoning district. And it's what you see here in pink, so it's pretty expansive in terms of the area. We have yet to have the graphics that I'd like to see from our consultants that help people visualize what this can be, so we've been working with them on that. And as of last Friday, we worked with Liz to really nail down a date for a joint meeting with Planning, Land Use, and ZBRC that is tentatively scheduled for November 8th, where we'll have our consultants there and walk them through exactly what has been done and where we wanna go with this, and really have an isolated meeting just on that topic, so that, and, you know, I didn't, at this point, we think we just kinda contained it to the land use committees, but that's kind of where we're at, at this point with this. Um, let's see here on the next one, I think, there was one more. Yeah, I just didn't wanna forget some of the other background work that we're doing on marketing and promotion, which is, you know, our newsletter stays strong, we kind of haven't increased the number, the outreach, we've kind of stayed at the 4,000, you know, 400 zone for a while in terms of our newsletter, but what's been interesting to see is our content seems to be hitting a little bit more and resonating with people. We've had increased open rates over the last several months, so at this, this last month in September, we had 47% open rate, which was really good. I mean, for a newsletter, I think the average can be in the 25% to 30% would be doing well, so 47, we thought has, was really good, so we're excited about that. And, you know, our website, I, you know, it's, it's, it's still something I call a work in progress, 'cause I'd like to see it improve over time, but it, it needs attention, I would say, from our outset, was almost three, two and a half years ago now. So I do feel like we need to be on top of, in, you know, updating the pictures, updating the content. To that end, we've worked on a few things, we've built in some itineraries, we've addressed the issue of office space because that's some of our top searches is office space, things to do, and restaurants. Those are how people are coming to our website, so we've been trying to enhance those a little bit. And we've been working with our partners, Middlesex III is our coalition. As you guys already know, we had, this week, we, you know, we're having a local meeting, a panel discussion on the different things going on in Burlington. We keep in contact with Mass Econ. Mass Econ usually receives kind of any of the companies or people interested in locating in Massachusetts, and then because we are partners with them, then they reach out to us. So that's kinda how some of that communication happens. We still are part of Greater Merrimack Convention and Visitor Bureau, and that's important 'cause we have a big, a large hospitality industry with our rooms and with our restaurants, so we try to stay plugged into that inasmuch as, you know, when they are working on regional or annual events, that they, people come and they know they can stay here in Burlington. So that's kinda how we work with them. So that is a lot, and I was trying to keep it to 15 minutes. If you have any questions, happy to answer them. I kinda tried to give a little bit of what's going on in Burlington right now, as well as how some of our initiatives fit into that, so happy to answer any questions.
All right, I see Nick's been writing away here as you've been speaking.
Oh, boy.
Always a lot of notes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Melissa, as always, thank you. Your, your updates are always very thorough. I mean that in the most positive way possible. Great metrics up front in terms of, like, job to resident ratio and where we're at. My biggest question about some of your upfront slides really centers around the vacancy rate? And if you've had a chance to talk with Waltham and Natick, Waltham seems to be trending like we're trending, right? But Natick is significantly lower overall. Just to back up, the X-axis on that graph was plotting what?
Hmm, have to, I actually have to go back and look at it. Let me look at it.
Was it, I mean, I assume time?
Oh, yeah, time. Yes. It was over a long period of time. I think it was over the last, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
15 years. Let me look at it.
Was it, I mean, I assume time?
Oh, yeah, time. Yes. It was over a long period of time. I think it was over the last, yeah, yeah, 15 years.
Okay, so that's a pretty long.
Yeah, it was a long period. It captured '08 to now.
So while, so while we spiked there, wherever it was earlier in the graph, I'd be curious to know what Natick is up to that managed to keep them so low in comparison to us and Waltham. I know that we're a different type of community, but I'd be very curious to know like what, what was happening at that time where we both spiked alongside with Waltham, but Natick managed to keep it down? Just a curiosity question there. And then jumping all the way to the end of the presentation, in terms of the marketing. So first off, 47% open rate this last month is absolutely incredible. But in terms of the 3,000 users that you're talking about on the website, do we have any metrics on who they are? Are they business owners? Are they, you know, planners from larger corporations? Are they people who are just curious and they're finding their way through search terms? Like, do we know who they are?
For our users for the website, no, not as much. I think that's one, you know, I guess, area of weakness in terms of convert, you know, I think it's called the conversion, right? So they come to your website, and how do you convert that into some action or pulling in that information? And so we haven't done that work yet. I would say, we've talked about trying to, you know, create maybe a more interesting PDFs to say, hey, if you're here at our website, we'll give you this great PDF that kind of puts it all together. But we have yet to do that. So short, we don't have a good sense of everyone who's coming.
Do we, do we know who our newsletter subscribers are?
Yes, yes. So that's been a good mix. That one we can see a little bit more clearly because they have to opt in. So that is a mix of residents and businesses and people who've been kind of in the industry. We've, you know, probably through our building department and those, those kind of, I would say, industry professionals.
Sure.
Kind of commercial side.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman. To follow up with Nick said about vacancies, how impactful do you think the Mall Road rezoning will impact that vacancy? Because we'll be able to change office to another use.
So my kind of assessment with kind of where we are with the commercial, I think, you know, if we have 8 million square feet of commercial office, as I see it, you know, I think we would be in a good position to try to maintain the 8 million square feet of office. The idea is that we have a lot of parking lot and infill opportunity that we can allow for some infill development that still helps support that existing 8 million square feet. So when we talk about the zoning, a lot of downtowns, when they're talking about office vacancies, they're very concerned that they need to start changing them to a residential use, for example. And that's because there's very little else there. We, on the other hand, have a strong kind of amenity-rich, you know, district. We do have a lot of restaurants. We have things to do, as well as a variety, kind of diversity of life science and office. What we're lacking is that live-work piece, so we do need a little bit more of a residential, but it can be an infill piece. And we're working on, that's, you know, part of what's been a struggle has been figuring out how to create this public realm piece that kind of feels like public assembly space. You know, we want to be, our, you know, how I see what we can do is that we have our town center, we're in Cambridge Street, but what, you know, Mall Road and Middlesex Turnpike can be is we can have a regional town center. We can be the living room and the place where people want to live and work together there. And those areas are where you're seeing the most reduced vacancy in office, is where you have a variety of, you know, things to do, places to live. And so that's what the idea is with the rezoning.
Thank you. Also, Mr. Chairman.
Jim?
No, I have nothing.
Michael?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thanks for the report, Melissa. Very informative and excellent, as usual. A couple of things. First, I wanted to say great job to you and your team on the Beer Gardens. They were so much fun, and I went to all four, and I think that last night we had over 700 people, and Brandon was sure to update me all the time with the numbers. He was very enthusiastic. Continuing with the, the stuff on the office vacancy, are we projecting with leases ending? We're coming out of that pandemic time and people shifting to working from home. Are we projecting an even further decline or increase in our vacancies? Because those leases are ending and companies are shifting to more of a work-from-home model? I mean, it's kind of, I think going forward from now is where we really have to watch it, right? So have you heard anything or seen anything that would speak to that?
Well, so I have not done kind of a, I think through some of the data sources that we have, what I'm trying to do is look at doing kind of a lease analysis of when certain leases will end. And those are the areas that you kind of, or buildings, districts that you want to kind of focus on to see what their next move is, right? That's how maybe a broker would do, right? They go in, couple of years out, are they going to renew or not? So those are things that we want to look at a little closer. And talking to property owners, there is a sense that, you know, as some of the larger tenants prune back, there's still enough interest to subdivide spaces and have new tenant space and new commercial leased up again. I think what the challenge is, from what I'm hearing, is the cost of construction for those subdivisions. So the tenant improvement to kind of make these spaces smaller for multi-tenants. So whereas one larger tenant may move out saying, hey, we don't need that much space, that now creates an opportunity, well, we'll, you know, carve out some smaller spaces. But that's, at this point, between materials and labor, expensive, not to mention, you know, the interest rates. So there's an expense piece that's, you know, higher than average at this point in time. And I think with remote work, obviously, the density, even though the jobs and the economy may be strong, you know, the real thing that I've noticed is that the job to, you know, space, there's a disconnect now. So whereas before you used to say, hey, we got, you know, this company coming in with 200 jobs, it's office jobs, you kind of know how many office, or how much office space roughly will be used. Now there's more of a disconnect with jobs. So you have, the economy's still strong, but you don't have that office demand as much connected to it. So that said, that we've also heard some adjustments on the landlord's side that's happening. For example, you know, like on the smaller spaces, maybe five-year leases are hap, you know, used to be the norm. Now it's looking at like seven-year leases, so they can recoup some of the costs from that, you know, maybe tenant improvement and the way the rents are. So if that helps to make sense. So there's some dance going on with landlords, you know, where I talk to property owners and property owner reps, you know, the municipalities role in trying to be more creative with how uses can be coupled is important, kind of what we've been doing with the Mall Road effort, and thinking about, yeah, how to create more opportunity, you know, through our policies, so.
And lastly, somewhat related, one thing that I've noticed lately that's been worrying me is there's been a lot of restaurant closures. Not so much in Burlington, but restaurants closing that are near our borders. Bill Rick has lost Peeney's Home Sweet Home. Bedford just lost Maggie's and previously lost Flatbread. We lost Sweet Ginger. And when you go out at night, places still seem really busy. I mean, it's tough to get a table everywhere. And when I go around to restaurants and stuff at lunch, they say where we're really being impacted is the lunch crowd, because people are working from home and not going out to eat as often for lunch. And that fits me perfectly, because when I worked in an office, I couldn't wait till 12 o'clock to go to lunch and get out of the office and go somewhere for lunch. And when you work in an office, there's always someone you can find to go to lunch with. Now, working from home, it's so much easier just to run over, make a sandwich, and then keep working, or do something else like run errands or play with the dogs that my, just looking at my own experience, my lunch and restaurant habits have definitely changed by working remotely. And with the shift of more people working remotely, I'm just worried, are we seeing any impact in our, our restaurants in our town about being really affected by that lunch rush going way down? Not so much dinner, because it seems like it's coming back in strong, but I'm worried that some of our maybe smaller places or family-owned places will be, have been really impacted by the change in dining habits from the change in the work structure.
Yeah, I mean, I think with, so short is I have not spoken or heard from any small independent restaurants that have closed or planning to close due to a lunchtime business. So I have not yet heard of that. So if you have heard of that, or if anyone's heard of that, please let me know, because I would want to understand that better. From what we're seeing, there's definitely a lot to shake out with remote work, you know, and how that, you know, it's not a definitive, a pattern that people can identify yet. What we're hearing is, yes, there is a little bit more of a model to take out on the smaller businesses, and they're looking, they're looking for fewer seats. Those are just like some of the newer businesses that have opened up in the region. So my colleagues in Bill Rick and, you know, and some of the other communities along Middlesex III have said that. But from what I've heard, this is anecdotally, that there has still been an, you know, the offset, even though we have not as much, you know, concentration between nine to five between people who are in town for remote and the hybrid, it still has sustained the restaurant demand. So that's how generally we've, I've heard it portrayed.
Okay, just, yeah, something to, just curious. Thank you, Melissa. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, very welcome. And I just wanted to say, I was on our, your website over the weekend looking for different dining experiences through that page, but I was looking at the rest of the website as well. And we continue to improve on that website, so I'm really pleased with the progress we've made there. You know what caught my eye, though? Early in your slide presentation, you mentioned the vacant storefront program?
Yes.
Can you elaborate just a little bit on what that's all about?
So part of, you know, part of the job entails going and sitting on different webinars from the state, which can be tiring at times, but I did hear that, I think it was through the Mass Development Program, they had an influx, they had an increase in funding for storefront improvement funds. And this is where some people have asked me about, well, can't we do a match? Well, oftentimes you need certain funds, and they have to be, they don't have to be, but they've come from CDBG money, which is federal money that we don't qualify for. But there's been a new pot of money that, that is existing, and I'm not sure if we're 100% eligible, but that's part of why we were doing the research, because it was really looking at vacancies. And what we still have was shops at Simon and some of the smaller pockets down Cambridge Roads, we still do have some vacancies that would qual, may qualify. So that's what I'm looking at. At this point, it's early on, but I just wanted to let you know, you know, these are things that we try to stay abreast on. So if we do qualify, we would submit.
So this is a program for property owners? What is it, like a low-interest or no-interest program where they can spruce up their property?
Oftentimes what it is, it's a match. So they have, you know, to put in 5,000 and they get an additional 5,000, so they have 10,000 to do an improvement program. That's usually the amount of money that we're talking about.
Well, that's interesting. Interesting. Okay, well, thank you, Melissa. Anybody, anybody have anything further to call, anything to add?
No, I don't, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Melissa, thank you again. Great to see you, as always.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
All right. Item 228, Citizens Time. Is anyone here for Citizens Time? I don't see anybody online. Apparently not. Item 229, Approval, New Police Station Building Committee. Paul, you want to start us off with that?
Sure, Mr. Chairman. As the Board is here, as our attention moves forward with the initiative to replace the town's aging police station, and at this point in time, we have a designer onboard to help us out with feasibility study, as the Board is aware. They were able to determine pretty early on that we could, in fact, support a new police station on the existing site, perhaps with the use of the parcel that's currently being used as the sculpture park. So that's one of the things we're exploring right now. I think we're at a point with projects where it would make sense for us to start the police station building committee, to have a proposal for the Board in terms of the composition of that. And I guess there's a couple of outstanding issues there in terms of, you know, just how many resident members would be appropriate for that committee. I don't think we settled on that. I'm curious to hear the Board's input as to how many residents, residents that don't serve on committees. So what I had suggested for the building committee was two members of the Select Board, two members of the Planning Board, a member from Zoning by Law Review Committee, a member from Ways and Needs, a member from Capital Budget, a member from Land Use, and then potentially, you know, some number of residents who maybe are not affiliated with any, any boards in town to participate on that. And at this point in time, it's a, a, a discussion with the Board. We do have some proposals from some of those actual committees as to who they would like to serve in those roles if the Board were to agree to that. And then, I would imagine, it's just a question of determining how many residents would be on the committee. They've placed an advertisement that's going to run through November 8th, so that has asked to be not appoint any residents this evening until we get all those applications in. The application's available on the website and also just swing by our office to get it. So just wanted to put this forward to the Board to have a purpose of the committee, and that would be to advise the Select Board and the town administration on all issues related to the initiative to build a new facility for the Brooklyn Police Department. So open item here, and depending upon where you want to go, we'd like to have the full committee appointed by the next meeting on, is that November 8?
13.
November 13.
Very good.
So I'll have suggestions here.
All right. Mike, why don't you start it off? Any questions or concerns or thoughts?
So just the, the committee itself is in advisory role, right? To, so would, and the final decisions will be made by our Board? How does it all work? How does it all work together?
Well, final, final decision will be made by the Select Board on any issue, and ultimately will be made by town meeting. And as I think we've discussed a little bit along the way, ultimately, the Board is going to get, more than likely, going to get a vote on this project as well at the polls. So there'll be a lot of improvements along the way. It will require a zoning change, you know, to the Grandview Farm PDB. In order to move on to that, the land sculpture park is on, so it is a pretty, a pretty complicated project, and we'll be, you know, looking for a lot of input along the way, and will require a lot of support along the way.
I do think that five is a lot. I'm open to what the majority of the Board thinks. And also, I'd like to be considered for the committee. In my subcommittee meetings with the chief, we meet almost every month, and it comes up every month. He fills me in on the updates about the feasibility study, so I've been following right along with the whole thing. So I'm interested to get the project, excited to get the project going. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Joe?
Just a couple of quick things. I agree with Mike on the, on the residents. I think it's too many. I understand how it works, the more you have in there, the better it is. But the biggest thing is that this committee, when they put it together, is an advisory committee. Let's get that word out there right now, advisory. It's not the end of the world when they say, whatever, this is the Board that's going to end up making all the final decisions on this, except for the color of the building, I would assume, which would come from the Planning Board or some trees and stuff like that. But this is an advisory committee, so this is going to advise us on what to do with this building. So, and I like Mike, with, you know, when I started my campaign nine years ago to do this, it was the DPW Buildings and the Police Station, so at least we've gotten this far. So that's where I am. I have no questions, or just a comment. That's all my comment was.
Okay. Thanks, Joe. Nick?
Yeah, 13's a lot. In my short six years, you know, in public community politics, or however you want to call it, it's not that having more voices is a bad thing, it's that if we don't have strong, effective leadership of a committee, then it can kind of just... if we don't have strong, effectual leadership of a committee, then it can kind of just burn and it tends to go nowhere. So if we're going to have 13, even if you took two residents off and made it three, you know, 11 people, it's still a lot, you know? And I get it. Like, I get that you're trying to be more inclusive and I appreciate that. You know, I don't know. I, I mean, I don't know who we take off, you know, to make it a, I don't know if we can make it a tight nine. But I'm pretty sure, you know, in doing so, someone, you know, or someone, some board committee may feel slighted and I hope that they understand that that's not the case, that, you know, we welcome conversation. I just, I want this advisory committee to be effectual, you know? And so, you know, when we get anything above 10, I start just to wonder if we're going to be able to maintain that level of, of progressive action over the course of the committee's tenure. So now I'm just rambling. I apologize. If we could consider, as a board, how to get this down to nine, I think that'd be great. If it winds up being something like 11, I'm still in support of it. You know, I'm not going to make or break me personally. I just, I want to make sure that, you know, we keep this ball moving.
Hey, Joe, you had a follow-up?
I did. I did. Just going with Mr. Priest. I, I guess my question would be, once we do end up with whatever number that's going to be, how it's going to be, do we pick a chairman? Do we pick a, a, a vice chairman? Do we pick someone that's going to actually, is that your job to run the meeting so, so that we don't get involved in like, you know, are they all going to be public meetings? Are they all going to be virtual meetings? Are they going to be, but who's going to be in charge of those meetings? I guess that's my biggest question.
Well, it's very different from the school process. The school process is much more involved and involves states. There's a lot more rules to jump through there. We see this committee as, as, you know, there's going to be eight million decisions that will be made along the way. In particular, you know, if we're fortunate enough to get the project approved, you know, from that point on, as the project's being designed, there'll be decisions on, a million different decisions will be made along the way. You know, I see all the other boards and committee membership here important in keeping these committees up to date as to where the project is, being able to report back to their committee and that, you know, not requiring us to go and update each and every individual committee area, every move that's made. And, I'm sorry, jumped into the dynamism.
Who would be?
The meetings are intended to be open, public, but the building committees that I've been involved with here with the fire station and the public works.
Right.
And like I say, less formal. We typically run the meeting ourselves. It's less of a chair, vice chair type situation. And we're really just looking to receive important along the way. That's a million different decisions we need to make.
Okay, so the other thing I'm going to go with on that is the fact that we, got a word that's right. I don't want to get in trouble with anybody. We've had meetings, committees in town where there's been no, there's been so much headbutting going on that it just wasn't right. And that's what I'm trying to avoid. I'm trying to avoid that. We have someone that's in charge of this meeting and just goes straight through and doesn't. And I understand that. There has to be a lot of people involved. So we get Ways and Means, we get Planning Board, and we get Budget, Capital Budget, so they all understand what's going on. That I have no problem with. But I would like to see somebody that's in charge of that meeting to say, yes, you can speak. No, you can't speak. No, it's not your turn. I don't want to see like we did before with just people starting to bock at each other for no reason. There was, there was no reason for any of that the last time we had a meeting like that. So that's, that's, I guess, where I'm going with this, Paul.
Well, I, I understand, Mr. Randy, and I know that you participated on the DPW project.
Yes, both of them, yeah.
So I envisioned it as being very similar to that, where it's a collaboration, everybody's in the room.
Right.
We're receiving updates from the designer. Maybe we're chiming in on the decision as to, you know, where in the building to locate a particular space or parking spaces or things of that nature. I mean, at the beginning, we were talking a lot about the site itself and whether there's limitations there, how to make it fit in, now with the town center overlay district and things of that nature. So.
I just remember how good it was.
Like I said, I think, you know, there's a lot of school building committees going on right now, and I'll just tell you, it's a very different process than what I've been involved with on the town side in terms of the fire station and the DPW building. It went very collaborative and very informative. And again, the goal is to give everybody just a little bit of a say in there and then hopefully they will consistently, you know, bring reports back to their committees to say what's going on on the building project.
That's where I was going with it, because the last two committees that I did sit on with the, with the DPW that we built, it was just such a great collaboration of people that were all concerned about the project. I mean, not that the other people aren't concerned, but it was no, there was no real list going on. So that's my biggest concern. I just don't think it's a good thing. Sorry.
No problem. Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is there a particular reason why, Paul, you thought maybe an odd number? I know it's an advisory committee, but do you think they'd be voting for certain things or taking votes? Is that why you wanted to?
I think there may be occasion when we may have to vote to decide amongst ourselves how we can afford a particular aspect of the project. But again, ultimately, the decision will be a lot of the board, the select board.
To follow up on Joe's point, I would assume that someone from the police department might be, like the chief, running that meeting a lot, because they're the ones with all the.
There's certainly going to be active participants, but we just didn't see them as having to be a member of the actual committee that we're trying to pull together.
All right.
I would imagine the chief would be at every single meeting and walk away with the deputy as well. And, you know, if we're talking about a particular area of the building, the firearms area, the shooting range, and I'm assuming we'd want to have the fire training officer there to weigh in on various aspects of the design, you know, whatever may be needed.
All right. I also agree, I think five is too high for residents. I'm okay with three. I think it's a larger population. It's more representative of the residents. And just the other thing, I have expressed interest on this board. I've worked in two Burlington Police Stations. I still go into numerous police stations when I teach. And I know the oncoming, you know, the trends that are coming, like physical work, physical crime versus cybercrime, the whole, I mean, the whole realm and the trending of law enforcement is changing. I think, you know, I think I know, because of my experience, I think I could help, you know, with certain issues on this committee or be able to explain things to the committee as well.
Well, the only thing I would add to that is that these are going to be open, posted meetings that any resident could sort of tune into if they have an interest in this along the way. And so technically, all five board members could participate in those meetings. I would just want to make sure that we have it posted properly as a public select board meeting at the same time, so everybody can be in the same room in terms of the committee. So we don't want anybody, anybody left out of the process. And again, we're going to, we're going to conduct the meetings, you know, on ECAD if they're willing to cover it. But if not, you know, on record, so people can catch up with what's going on with the building project. So it'll be hybrid, you know, you can tune in from wherever you may be at home, just elicited or chime in. And again, I understand it's an exciting project and I would want to be on there too as well. So everybody, everybody has a chance to participate. Well, five of the five of you board members want to attend a meeting that's just have it posted properly.
So just a follow-up, that the reason why I bring that up is if someone from the police department's not there to maybe explain a police-related issue or why this, I just think I could, might be able to fill that gap because 35 years, I think I kind of know a little bit about it. But anyway, I'll end it with that.
Mike, good.
Mr. Chairman, yeah, one way we could, I mean, planning board's going to get a, a full say in this when they do the site plan. I mean, to get to nine, we could just make it one planning board member and two residents and you get nine right there. I think an odd number is a good idea in case there was a vote.
We're not going to vote on this tonight, so this is something we have to talk about for the next week, or two weeks before the next meeting, right?
Correct. What's the date that, Lynn, that you've asked folks?
So the applications for residents is through November 8.
November 8?
Yes, the next meeting is 13.
Sort of nail this down by the 13th or our, our next meeting?
Yeah, I'd love to have, have everyone pointed by at the time. You know, just get started with, you know, where we are today, get everybody up to speed. Chief's going to be doing reports to any resident who wants to come by on Wednesday evenings, board members, or any town meeting members. Chief is going to be willing to do tours of the building and just show everybody at least the existing conditions and why we want to approach the station.
On, on every Wednesday, is what you said?
Well, we're here on Wednesdays, Wednesday evening. So if, if somebody wants to come down to tour the station, you know, we're, we're willing to make arrangements to get anybody who's willing. And then obviously, we'd like to do it in a thoughtful and organized way, so we're not giving private tours to every single person. But at the same time, you know, he indicated that Wednesday evenings on a regular basis may be a good time for folks to get down there and take a walk through the building.
Yeah, he did say he'd be available any Wednesday night. He's that, that admin about showing people, you know, the need.
All right. I'm curious what kind of response we're going to get. And I think that might, may help guide us in, in terms of how many people we may want or, or need on this thing. I have the same concerns everyone else has. I've been on large committees and I've been on small committees. Those larger committees just don't seem to be terribly effective in, in my experience. I'd like to see this, I too would like to see this trimmed a little bit, but at the same time, I'm curious how many, how much interest there is out there. And perhaps, perhaps we could even consider having some alternate members in case people tend to drop off during the course of this. It's going to take years, Paul. I'm sure it's not going to happen overnight. So, you know, there's something we have to think about. So we haven't got a lot of time.
Mr. Chairman, one quick question for, have we had any residents apply?
Uh, two.
Two, okay.
Oh, for the 13th or at the, at, at the deadline, is it, would it, would it be possible or would it be proper to share with all five of us all of the applicant information that is submitted and allow us to maybe each maybe draw one or two candidates from that? Or is it improper to share with anybody?
I think if, because everybody gets all the names and everybody gets them at the same time, that should be fine.
Yeah.
Put them together as a package and, you know, you'll have at least, you know, by the 8th, you should have a whole list of everything and that, you know, the meetings that are.
Yes, we think they would have the weekend.
You'll have at least a sort of a long weekend there.
Yeah.
For me to the, who's interested.
Okay. I will talk a little more about that. And I think, I think I'd like to do that, maybe give everyone opportunity to pick two out of whatever that, that list is for consideration or something like that to move this thing along. Okay, so we get some, we get some thinking to do on that. Okay, anything further on that? Don't think we're meeting anybody? All right, stay tuned. Item 230 minutes, regular minutes of nine, 9:27 and October 2nd, as well as the Alcohol Subcommittee of October 16th.
I'll make a motion to approve minutes of regular meeting at 9:27 and October 2nd, and then make a motion also for the Alcohol Subcommittee on 10:16.
Motion approved, there's second?
Second.
Any further discussion on the minutes? Any none, all in favor?
Aye.
Right there, is there? Subcommittee reports, let's go left to right. Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Saturday, November 18th, the Burlington Fire Department at Station Two is going to be hosting the Red Cross. And the Red Cross is, has this program called Sound the Alarm, Save a Life. They will be volunteers across at Station Two. And they will be making, taking appointments and says they're installing free smoke alarms in your community. And you can request a smoke alarm installation. But they will be at Station Two on Saturday, November 18th. I don't have the times on it, but the number to call, Sydney, I'll give this to you if you want it, is 1-800-564-1234. That's 1-800-564-1234. So that's Subcommittee for the Fire Department. And the other one is Middlesex 3. Melissa mentioned it earlier. They're meeting at Grandview Farm this Thursday at 9:00 AM. And a lot of commercial leaders are going to be there. It's going to be a discussion panel. It's a, just what's happening in, in, in Middlesex 3. And focus of this meeting is the town of Burlington. That's this Thursday at 9 o'clock.
There is a fee for that, though, if you're not a member.
There is, oh, yeah, I'm sorry. There's a, it's free for all members. For any non-member, it's a $50 fee.
Mr. Priest?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No official updates. I just want to say, next Tuesday is Halloween. And, you know, whenever there's a, a hot day or cold day or something that, you know, is falling in between our meetings, I just want to say, everyone be safe. It's obviously getting darker sooner. If you're out driving, watch out for little ones that might not be minding the road. You know, let's all have a, a safe and happy Halloween. Thank you.
Your costume?
My costume?
Yeah.
I'm not dressing up this year.
Joe? Yes, very quickly. I had a very nice walk in the woods today with Sydney. We went over there and did a few little things, talked about a little bit about archery hunting and ran into a couple of people, saw a tree stand. What else did we do? We walked and we just did a very nice little thing over there today.
This is a completely genuine, absolutely for sure, real deer.
Scrape.
Deer scrape. I'm a savage.
Deer scrape? What's a deer scrape? A deer, a sign of a deer?
No, there's a, there's a tree that will come up and a branch will come over it. They call it a licking branch. A deer will lick that and he sends our hormones off on his, out of his tongue and his mouth. And then they get down below and they scrape the ground with their front legs and then they urinate in it and then attracts the females. So you asked.
Yeah. Read it right after I asked.
You heard it here first, folks. Tune in two weeks, we got some more deer fun facts.
Listen, I could tell you a lot more.
Can we put that on the agenda? Joe talks about deer facts.
Sydney's going to put together a wonderful piece on ECAD. I'm sure we can all tune in and see that when she's done.
I'll tell you.
Anything further, Joe?
Well, like, you know, you didn't do, Mike.
Good. That was enough.
Yeah, we're good. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Exciting stuff. Next week, the police statement is, the police department is hosting the first regional briefing symposium of the I Love You Guys Foundation. It's on school safety. It's next week, November 2nd and 3rd. And the I Love You Guys Foundation is a foundation that focuses on school safety. And there, a lot of what our protecting in schools is based on a lot of their theories the chief told me all about. He's excited about this. And he's been out to their facility and learned all about, he's went, sat through their seminars, learned all about their ideas and procedures. And it's a big part of the, the strategy we use to protect our schools. So that's pretty cool that it's going to be right here in Burlington. Also, Saturday, I was fortunate enough to attend the Eagle Scout Ceremony for Burlington's newest Eagle Scout, Christiana Tia Poirot. And she was from my old Troop 511. So it's exciting to welcome a new Eagle into our Troop 511 family. It's always fun to go to those. And lastly, I want to say, pass out a few thank yous. We have a new, finally a flagpole at Brushfield at Marshall Simons. And I thought after, when I saw the new scoreboards that town meeting allocated the money for, I thought it just, we needed a, a flagpole. Because every time, I learned last year when I, we go into the soccer games and they play the National Anthem, you have to look over the hill at the flag and a little weird. So now Brushfield has its own flagpole. And it was the old flagpole from Varsity Field that actually had two when they moved the new bigger one over. So with the suggestion of Bob Kuna, we re, we moved that one from Varsity Field to Brushfield. And it was made possible by Brendan Egan, Parks and Rec, Bob Kuna and the schools, and donations from both of them, their departments, and donations from Steve Dupuy, the American Legion, and a donation from Chris Hanifin and the VFW. So it took a lot of team effort, a lot of people to help out. And it's pretty cool to have a, a flagpole. to have a, a flagpole over there. So pretty neat to see, and I just want to say thank you to all those folks for helping out and getting that done. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, looks good. I'm sorry, thank you. Thank you, Mike. Chairman has nothing new to report? I'll toss it over to you, Sagarino.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have some actually great news to report on the PFAS project. Late last week, we were notified by the state that we were awarded approximately $3.5 million in loan forgiveness for that project, and we borrowed the money for that through the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust. As you guys recall, we had got 0% loans on the PFAS upgrade at the, at the Mill Pond Treatment Plant. We had applied for loan forgiveness on that project, which is something that they do allow, you know, a while ago. We had, and crossing our fingers that hopefully we would get about 6% of the project in loan forgiveness, but they authorized us for 25% of the project cost, so $3.5 million in savings to the town of Burlington due to this program here. We've got a lot of people to thank on that. Public Works, Brian, Rachel, Treasurer Gary Genino, Genino, John Dizio, as well as a state delegation, Ken Gordon, and Senaba City Freeman, as well as, you know, the state has received an influx of funding from the federal government, and they're trying to get it out there to the cities and towns, and in this case, it was a mutual benefit to us in Burlington. So we received $1 million directly from the feds, and, you know, happy to report that we received another $3.5 million reduction in that project that, you know, our company will come up with that, so we're really happy about that.
Very good. You know, we, we do quite well in terms of grants and, and low-interest loans and things like that, despite there's some, you know, some critics out there that say we don't work hard enough to get these things, but.
I think we work very hard at it, and I think we've been very successful at it in many different aspects of the town, so.
Absolutely, absolutely. Great, thanks. Thanks for that update. Appreciate it. Anybody else? John, Lynn, anybody? Share with us. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Mike.
Second.
Second by Jim, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen.